All right. Thank you for being part of the focus group and I want to thank you for being here. We will do introductions very quickly if you want to just say your name, that's your present.
Melinda Dole's present.
Katie Schwartz, present.
Simi Pednike, present.
Sharon Van Buren, present.
Louise Hines, present.
Driscoll, present.
Great, thank you. So tonight, I'm playing the role of the moderator and the moderator, I'll take you through the presentation and set the stage for questions. We have three questions that we want to delve into in our focus groups in preparation for whatever contingencies might take place through the state and guidance that we get to open schools in the fall. I also have Julie Nielsen is here. Julie will not be actively participating in the meeting, but she is the assistant moderator in the role there as she will bring up the presentation, she will make sure she captures all of the comments, archive the comments and keeps us, keeps the presentation intact as we move forward. So the purpose of the focus group is that we've been asked as a district to start thinking about not both formally, I should say, informally, what might the fall look like? We still, as you watch the news, are unsure of what the pandemic, how it will play out in the summer months and how it may play out in the fall. There's concerns about now the different aspects of the way younger people are being affected, where early on in the pandemic, as it started, it seemed to be that the younger kids were not as susceptible. Well, all that plays into thinking about what if we are not able to open school as we normally would in the fall? So we want to start the planning process and that's part of the purpose of this evening is to gather your thinking about some potential contingencies for the fall. We're doing focus groups with all of our parent advisory groups, we're doing the focus groups with our staff as well, teachers and administrators and talking to students. And so after all this data, at the end, I'll talk to you about the timeline and where we will go with the data. It will also maybe lead us into further discussions and decision-making process in the summer. So next slide, Julie? There it is, okay. Can you move us to the governor?
One second, Keith.
Okay, yep. I should say, as Julie, as we're pulling this up to make sure that the presentation runs smoothly, we've had a lot of questions about, I'd like to participate in these focus groups too. We're starting with our parent advisory groups and we're hoping that they are representative. That's part of what our advisories have been representatives for our school system as a full system, based on their enrollment, their child's enrollment in different schools and different walks of responsibilities in the system. And we will look out as we reach out further. We also want to make sure that we take a look at what worked well that we can implement next year outside of the school. We've moved to people working from home. There's some areas such as finance that that could be continued in a very easy way. We haven't done that in the past in our system. But with growth and other needs and the efficiencies that we see, that's one area we want to explore along with with other areas for our kids, our parents and our teachers, once we know completely how we might be able to open. So here you see the introduction again and who's here and the purpose, if you want to move to the next slide, Julie? There you go. This again shows up, the direction from the governor was for the commissioner of education to start looking at developing plans and guidance if the school year looks to start or if we need to start in a typical year or a non-typical year. So we are now moving forward to try to make some or gather some information about what we would do. All right. We can move on, Julie. So what we know, and we've had discussions about this when we were speaking last week at our board meeting, but distance learning was a temporary shift in our instructional practices and in response to the pandemic. But it is not the same thing as online learning. Online learning is a focus where teachers have been trained on how to utilize a digital platform for presenting an entire class. What we were doing was distance learning where we had, if you remember, or not remember it, we're still in the middle, but our elementaries, we did some mixtures of some seesaw work and online work along with some paper. But this was, it was different because our teachers, even though we had two weeks to plan, they did not have the time to truly train for some of them that have never lived in a virtual environment and have not taught classes other than what we normally think of as a classroom with a teacher. So it's important to delineate the differences on a teacher has been trained versus one that has just moved into it. So we know that comes with all of the challenges that we talked last week about when we looked at grading and some of the difficulties that we may have had with engaging in the same way, with assessing in the same way, with teaching in the same way. We focused our content, pared our content down to really look at our priority standards. Because if you think about, we had, this trimester is short because of the two weeks that we were not teaching at the start of the trimester for planning. And then we are looking at that last week, really focusing on helping our kids that need to succeed, that are struggling. So the number of days in the trimester are different and everything about it is different. So that's important to keep in mind as we think about what it might look like in the future if we're into something simpler, similar, how we would adjust and move forward. So then the number of factors that we talked about, again, a lot of kids are impacted and families are impacted differently. So tonight, what we want to look at is three potential scenarios and we're going to, we're going to take 10 minutes on each scenario to discuss those. The first scenario is due to the uncertainty of next year and if we were looking, I'm sorry, but looking at stakeholders for a face-to-face environment, if we start face-to-face, even if it looks like we could bring all kids back, there may be changes that we need to think about that we're trying to surface in these discussions on what that might look like. We want to look at a distance learning environment. If we were back into a similar where kids were not in the classrooms, how would we adjust to make sure we can capitalize and mitigate some of the challenges that we've seen, but also to springboard on some of the positives that we've seen as well. And then we want to look at what if we had a hybrid situation that due to social distancing and the constraints we might have, that we may not be able to have our full student population in any of our schools on any one day. So what that might look like. So we're beginning that plan and what we hope to do is gather all this information and then report back to our internal stakeholders the week of May 26th. All right, so ground rules for the focus group. We want you to do the talking. We want to make sure that everyone is heard and so I will moderate and like we did last year, make sure that we've heard from each one of you. And if someone has a lot of ideas, I will probably move along and make sure we get everyone's voice, but we'll go through during that 10 minutes and we found that in other focus groups that has been enough time to make sure that you all have enough time to contribute. You also can put things in the chat. Like I said, we're capturing the chat and we'll use that as well. Just ground rules, no right or wrong answers. Everybody's personal experiences and opinions are important. I think we model that very well as a board, or you do as a board, I should say, and speak out whether you agree or you disagree. So we gather everyone's thinking and hopefully we have a wide range of opinions. We know we will have a wide range of opinions through all of our focus groups because everyone comes from a different walk of life, so to speak, in a professional view of our district. So as I said, we're recording these comments. We want to capture everything you say and everything you write and I want you to feel comfortable speaking your mind. When we analyze the data and look to pull it out of what we're learning, no one will be identified. So all of your comments go into the comments with all of the other focus groups. So what a focus group is not, it's not a debate, we're not debating each other, it's not group therapy, which sounds a little funny, but we're not trying to look at our philosophies and work those out. It's not conflict resolution or problem solving and it's not an opportunity to collaborate. We want your individual ideas and we want to capture those. Next slide, Julie? Just the norms, mute your mic when you're not speaking. We said for other focus groups that the camera is optional, but for you, because you're bored and you need to be seen, it's not optional, so. And then before you speak, as we've been doing with our virtual meetings, say your name so we know that you are speaking and use the chat feature if you want to ask questions to me, the moderator, or if you want to post a comment or to ask to speak if it's been a little bit more difficult. And it asks that you don't have private chat pieces in there. There are the ability in with these WebEx meetings that you can send private messages, but all that gets recorded and we just want to have everything out there transparent. All right. Okay, so our process today, as I said, we have 10 minutes to discuss each of the scenarios, the face-to-face, the distance learning, the hybrid. Our goal is to generate a maximum number of different ideas and opinions from as many people in the time allotted. Expect that there will be wait time that I'll wait for you guys to think through or if there's other areas that you need to talk about. So I think we're ready to go to that first question then. So the first question is what if we be in school with a face-to-face environment? So the things you would think about, I'd like you to think about, what would assessments look like? What are relationships and our connections look like, even if social distancing is relaxed? What would we need to keep in mind? The impact on grade level, subject benchmarks? If we feel we've seen some things or we want to look at the content and transitions when you think about the secondary school. So all of that in your mind from what you know about where we are with the pandemic and opening schools. So I'm going to keep time here for 10 minutes and I'm going to go ahead and open it up then for your comments and I'll try to walk you through and make sure everybody can speak. So Julie, if you take the presentation down for a minute so I can see people's faces. And while we're waiting, we could go ahead and get started. So anyone want to start and then we'll make sure we go through and gather everyone's input. Pat, go ahead, Pat.
Well, I'd hope that we wouldn't start unless we had testing to see if anyone has it so that teachers are healthy when they're there and kids are healthy. I'm hoping that we have testing by then so we can make sure kids are healthy. And then I think we need to do some other safety things like wearing face masks for everyone. And I think that's just the safety issues and safety on the bus and, you know, wearing face masks on the bus. I just don't know how we can distance these kids in a building, in a regular building, unless we did something like bring half the class in one day and half the class on the next day. Something like that to make the classroom smaller and then kids do on, well, that's getting to the third one, so anyway.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Good point. Let's talk about that when we look at the hybrid.
Yeah.
If we just go through, if anyone's ready, I'd let you go or I could just call in.
Okay, thanks. This is Sharon. If we do face-to-face, there needs to be some protocols in place, guidelines for people entering the building. We need to have, make sure that people are safe and follow the guidelines of the CBT. I think that, to be a little optimistic, we need to consider the, what do you call it, sanitation of the building. You know, we have enough people on board, how do we protect our teachers and the children? And as Pat said, the safety riding the bus, how do we social distance kids on the buses? And then in the lunchroom, note, we serving food, what is it, what would be the protocol for serving lunches? You know, is it going to bring their own food? Are we going to serve those? So there's a lot of ifs, you know, and think about before we consider a face-to-face if those sanctions are not lifted by the governor.
Do you have a suggestion? Because one of the things I'd like to push you on as you guys ask questions, would you have a recommendation on what we should do? Say lunches, Sharon.
Lunches is, it's sort of like on the delivery, I guess. But we're, at my institution, we have suspended because we don't have the social distance of students in our cafeteria. So it will be, what do you call it, whole meals where they can go in and pick out what they want, scan it, pay for it, or have some kind of system where it will identify the number in and then it records that you paid for it. That's how I would suggest that we do. We wouldn't have people preparing meals. We have already prepared meals so that they can select from that.
Okay, or kids could bring cold lunch.
Yes.
Great, all right.
This is Simi. To follow up on Sharon's point about the lunches, I wonder if it's easily accessible to find out what they're doing in some European countries that are starting to open back up their schools. You know, I'm wondering if the safest thing to do is not even to have a cafeteria and just have students eat in the classroom, which is not ideal. I mean, I don't think the students would like it, I don't think the teachers would like it. But if you can constrain the number of people you eat lunch with to 25 or 30 people instead of you 600, you may end up, you know, just preventing the spread as much as we can. One other thing I was thinking about in terms of the academics was because we have had three fewer weeks or we'll end up with three fewer weeks of school this trimester and a lot of teachers have been teaching sort of the more essential pieces of information and not all of the other pieces of information that students would be getting in the classroom. And coupled with big, you know, the traditional summer slide plus a lot of enrichment programs that parents may have used in the past may not be occurring. I do wonder if academically we will have to regress, you know, half a year or a third of a year to cover a lot of this information that kids either aren't getting now or won't necessarily retain over the course of the summer. One thing that I think would be interesting is if we could change the calendar and and again, this is all assuming that this is okay to do, but spend more time when the weather is hot in school and that's theoretically when the disease is less virulent and take longer breaks in the winter when school is, or when the disease is likely to be more dangerous and just kind of keep, you know, maybe we do a month-long break in the wintertime or something like that. And I know that would be very challenging for people with respect to child, especially, you know, parents of younger children with respect to childcare or managing workplaces or whatever. But it may help mitigate some of the dangers of keeping people together in a time where we want to, you know, if they have to be learning for a certain amount of time, let's try to get that time where the time is least dangerous.
Good, so we'll come back. Just to make sure I'm summarizing correctly, we need to think about starting the year, what content we teach because we probably want to do a little bit more than we normally do to make sure we know where kids are from this year and then go forward and then change the calendar. Okay, good, thank you.
Melinda, so I mean, as far as the face-to-face, I mean, we're, obviously, there's still a lot we don't know about how this affects children. And we also have to wait to get the guidelines from the Minnesota Department of Education and everything, if we can even do this. But I think it's great that we're planning for this. I would say I agree with Pat that a huge thing is going to be testing and whether or not we're going to be able to be testing. And, you know, that's going to be daily temperature type of things. It's going to be making sure our teachers aren't, you know, infected because, you know, our teachers are a lot of people we're going to be worried about as well, especially teachers that are older or have, you know, underlying health conditions. I think it's going to be important to have more janitorial help than we have it now where they're throughout the day going down and cleansing things. I think it's going to be important to have touchless paper towels and soap and things like that in the bathrooms. Face masks, like Pat had mentioned too, but I think another thing is making sure we can social distance kids in the classroom and maybe looking at teachers rotating throughout the rooms instead of kids rotating through their classes would be something that'd be safer. And as far as lunches, I think at this point, if we were at the infection level that we're at now or even higher, the best thing would be for kids to bring cold lunches. And then those students that are in the free and reduced lunch could have the lunch type of plans, kind of like they're picking up now, where those are prepackaged for them and given out on a daily basis.
Great, thank you. Katie?
I wasn't unmuting. So I don't agree with a lot of what was said, unfortunately. I don't think we can ask kids to wear masks. I don't think it's necessarily safe for a child to wear a mask for six or seven hours for the day. I know I go to the store for 45 minutes and I'm, it's hard to breathe. So I don't think that that will be an option. I don't think testing would be an option because right now it takes, you know, anywhere from two to four days to get a test back. So you've got, are you going to keep a teacher out of the class for two to four days? They get their results back and then by the time they come back, they could have been exposed again from the time they got it. So really, I don't see those as viable options to try and say that we can go face-to-face. I am hoping we can go face-to-face because I think kids need to get back in school. I like the idea of having teachers switch classrooms when able. I know different kids will take different electives, so there will be times that kids will have to be out. But for the secondaries, it would probably be a lot less kids in a hallway. As far as lunches, I like the idea of a prepackaged lunch. I don't like the idea of making kids bring their own and free and reduced kids getting a special lunch because the free and reduce, the whole idea of it is that nobody knows that you're on free and reduced lunch. And if you're handing a kid a lunch, then everybody's going to know that that child is on free and reduced lunch and we can't do that. I don't think even legally you can do that because it is supposed to be private information. So I think having a grab-and-go option where everything is prepackaged, maybe even the teacher just goes down with each kid's lunch pin for the younger kids and gets their lunch and they eat in the classroom or, you know, can they spread out in a gym and eat? And another thing with face-to-face is maybe limiting the amount of the day that they're actually in school, maybe not having electives.
Okay, great. And move on to Louise. We're a little behind time, but I think we'll keep that same number of minutes as we go through. Just mute.
One thing taking on to something Katie said with the masks, I think about our littles in kindergarten, being able to handle a mask for littles might be more dangerous than not having the mask. I think too with those, when we get to lunch, what does that child do with the mask? They put it in a bag, what do they do to keep that safe? So I certainly want protective measures and I certainly want some things. I'm just thinking about how the masks would work if that's an option. I'm wondering about the connection part with our students, if it might be possible when they come back and assuming face-to-face in the fall, when they come back, if they reconnect with their this year's teacher when, in their first couple of days before they move to their next year's teacher, just that opportunity to reconnect, to say goodbye, to say you're in good hands as you move on. And then also I know in the elementary level, we're doing feedback is the way assessment is going. It's feedback going to families. If that feedback, we can make sure we get that to next year's teacher in time to help with some of that assessment part without students having to continually be assessed, that might be really helpful. I'm also wondering in face-to-face if that necessarily means every school face-to-face. The reason I'm asking is as I listen to Governor Walz and the idea of turning a dial and part of it is what is the most predictable environment? Other people may not agree with me, but I tend to believe our elementaries are more predictable because the students move less, the teachers walk with them in the hallway. So maybe, maybe there's an option that that is what opens to face-to-face. That certainly would help our parents who are the childcare situation. Other than that, I think everything I thought about has been covered by someone else.
Well, that took, we went to about 12 minutes. We'll stay with that, about that amount of time. This is where you could use the chat because I know it's not normal for, I mean, we normally would talk through a little bit more, but that was great. And as you, as Louise modeled there, as you hear things that you support, that's great to acknowledge and then you can push new ideas as you go. So we want to go on now, what if we have to begin the year in a distance learning format similar to the way we're ending the year? What should we think about to improve as we go forward? So again, the relationships, the assessments, we've talked a lot about grading. We could start taking a look at all of those transitions. So we'll spend another 12 minutes here and I'll open it up for anybody who would like to start.
I've been thinking about this and one thing I'd like, you know, is a group of teachers who did the face, the technology well, to come up with some ideas for staff development for those who were struggling with it and spend some time on getting those skills up for those people who had difficulty with it. The other thing I'd like to see happen is more use of online programs that drill and practice basic skills so that kids don't have to spend that time. Some of this stuff could be done at home, like if we went like a half a day, so we eliminate the lunch thing. Or, you know, just have a snack instead in the room and then send them home a little early or bring them in a little late, one way or the other. But that really doesn't help out parents with the daycare stuff, so I don't know if that's a good idea. But I'm just thinking off the top of my head here, so some more use of technology other than what we've been doing, I think, would be a good idea and something that teachers can monitor closely because most likely we're not going to be in school. So I think technology is going to be really important.
Great, all right. Let's go the same order and I'll just go to Sharon.
Yeah, got it. Okay. I think we have to really get creative on how we're going to deliver materials. In terms of the grading, I think that we really need to have a process in order because one thing I don't want to happen, if people are earning, are working hard to earn those grades and they're great, better grades, then they should be able to, be able to obtain those grades. And but I, on the other hand, I don't want to just pass people on because we're in a predicament, a pandemic. So I think we need to really stress how we're going to proceed and make it continuous from this point on if we're going to learn in this environment. Distance learning, I mean, I think we can make this an opportunity instead of a chaotic situation because there are kids that we probably need to provide more resources. That's what we need to be doing, is to provide the resources so that they can better act the situation in terms of using the technology that we have. And if we, if we use, for instance, in our group, all of the contract teachers got together, all of the property teachers got together, had a similar curriculum that they introduced. Then they can, if one can't deliver, the other one can deliver for the other one. So we should have a plan how we're going to deliver that, the materials in concert with one another.
And to make sure I understood, other resources, we could prepare those over the summer, whatever that looks like, not just technology, get it out to all kids so there'd be different resources or more. So there'd be different resources or or a more wide variety of resources kids might use next year to help them. Okay.
Yes, exactly.
All right, Simi.
So one of the things that I think I would like to see if we do go forward with distance learning is I know that we're delivering sort of an abridged content or amount of content this spring, and it would be nice to figure out how we can deliver the totality of what teachers intend to teach if they're face to face in a distance learning environment. And I don't know if that's even possible, but it would be nice to explore how we could do that. I've also heard from a lot of people that keeping the connection is really challenging between the teachers and students. And that I know in some, you know, it's it's easier to have a morning meeting for third graders who are all kind of following the same day and it's a little bit harder at the high school level. But if there is a way that, or should we start thinking about doing some synchronous learning, if only to help students feel connected to the teachers in their classrooms? One of the things I've heard a lot from elementary parents is that the amount of time that elementary students spend doing schoolwork and the amount of time that elementary students require care from a parent who is working full time just doesn't match. And so if there are things we can do to help, not busy work, but just help families have more time taken up by distance learning so that they aren't, you know, so their elementary students not spending ninety minutes distance learning and then seven and a half hours bothering their their parents during the workday when their parents are trying to keep their jobs. I think it'd be really helpful this summer if we could do some sort of analysis on what distance learning looks like this spring, what worked, what didn't work, what changes teachers would like to implement, what things they think we should do differently. And just have a little bit more analytical rigor behind what we decide to roll out in the fall or in future distance learning opportunities so that people feel like we are making decisions, taking into account the totality of data that we have access to. And then the last thing, and this is just kind of a one off, but if there is a way that we can ensure that students are being able to, that students are being able to earn the grades that they're earning with, you know, the appropriate amount of rigor and, you know, I I heard a one off that, you know, sometimes, and I don't know how widespread this is, or even if it is widespread, that sometimes because kids aren't in the classroom, it's easier for them to slide a little bit on on doing things the way that we would expect them to do. So if there's a way that teachers can ensure that there is some integrity to what happens during the assessment process.
Great. Linda?
Yeah, if if we do have to continue with distance learning, which highly likely that's probably the case. I'd like to see our classrooms, especially at the secondary level, try to be a little bit more mimic of an actual classroom. And I don't know how that would work with technology. But, you know, trying to have more teleconferencing where your classes at this time, kids can raise their hand on the board and people are communicating, feeling like they're more in a classroom where the teacher's teaching it more of a live teleconference thing. Kind of like what we've had to switch to at the college level and the classes we teach, especially for the secondary level. I think it might be a little harder for that elementary level. Maybe especially with the whole, you know, having to be at a class at a certain time if they're at home and their parents might be working. Maybe having more worksheet type of things and assignments that they can do as it's been now. Another thing I thought of, and I don't know what's the cost, how this would work, but those children who don't have parents at our home that can be, you know, monitoring things and helping them throughout the day, having more of the kids club type of thing for how we now have for the essential workers where that's a during the day thing where instead of doing, you know, activities and playtime and whatever else, the kids are each on their phone books and having their setup where the kids club staff can be kind of monitoring a lot of that, too.
Thanks. Katie?
So my thought is, is if we have to go back to distance learning, that it be online learning. This distance learning is not working for anybody that I've talked to. I don't think I've heard from one person that said, this is the most wonderful thing we've ever done and let's continue it as long as we possibly can because it just isn't working. And something will have to look different for our special ed kids because this is really not working for them. And I don't know if there will be some way that they could somehow go back to school since there are so few in their classes. But if we do go face to face, we need to do online learning. Our high school kids have to be sitting in front of their computer or whatever device, doing the class. It doesn't have to be the full hour. It could be thirty minutes of actual teacher led instruction and then thirty minutes of working on their stuff. For secondary kids, for elementary kids, I think they should be in school for at least two to three hours, sitting in front of something. Even if it's broken up throughout the day for an hour, an hour, an hour, where they're learning something because these kids aren't learning. And that this is not, this is not working and distance learning can't be a thing two trimesters in a row. We need to change it to online learning if we're going to have to do that.
Great. Louise?
I couldn't agree with Katie more in terms of what do we need to do to shift from distance learning to online learning? If that's professional development for staff, so be it. If that is some kind of increase in home resources, which which Sharon mentioned, and I think even beyond the technology. It's like, how do we provide help at home? Can we get parents who are furloughed who are willing to tutor? Do we have some high school students out there who are willing to tutor so that students have access to someone other than teacher or other than parent at different times of the day? My head is still in that connection mode also. So I think about our kindergartners who might start their school experience with distance learning. And I know how important that first meet and greet is, not just for the child, but for the parents to know, you know, my child is in good hands. And so I would hope there would be some way, even if there's distance learning, that at least on the elementary level, our kinders have a meeting greet, maybe it's it's one at a time, maybe it's something like that. And then I'm also thinking about that with the the rest of elementary where our teachers had those assessment dates. If instead we could use some of those where here's a time where you can come in with your child and you get to meet the teacher and we can set up, yes, we're going to be distance learning and here's what it might look like. Because our schools came from spring break to distance learning, wherein other schools were in session, maybe Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, they started distance learning, that Monday, Tuesday was an opportunity to set students up for, here's what it will look like. Our students have never had that kind of opportunity with a teacher. It was, here we go. And so any way we could put something, even if it's a day or two upfront to say, here's what your learning is going to look like. And again, hopefully online versus distance learning. And here's how you set it up and here's here's your expectations, I I think would go a long way.
Excellent. All right. We drifted again for another two minutes. So if we keep going, we learn it. It's great. And I don't mean to cut you off. I I I don't think we have, but this is where you can still use a chat room too, as you you start to think about things that you didn't have a chance to say. So our last question is, what if we bring, we begin the year in a hybrid model, some type of face to face learning with social distancing and some type of online now, if we move into that thought process or distance learning. Keeping those same ideas in mind of what suggestions would we, would you have on approaching it in that manner? And well, again, we'll start with Pat.
All right, this is a hard one, but I think this would, there's a lot of opportunity. There's a lot of programs out there and I know the state of Minnesota has a online school. Perhaps we can enroll everyone in it and bring teachers in doing it. I don't know. Because I don't know what the program is that they're using, but I use things like Odyssey. They had all kinds of things that you learn online and kids did enjoy it because it was in a game format. So it can teach basic skills, basic reading, those kinds of things that need drill and practice. Vocabulary for science and social studies could all be done in that way and you could still have your lectures. And I know that, you know, perhaps the teachers could do online F I A D. Is there some way we can get, you know, all of the kids on the screen and the teacher be able to see all of the kids and the kids be able to see the teacher, just the teacher. And that way they can, you know, lead a class in exercise or yoga or something like that, that they can do at home. Other things I was thinking of was, well, I like the idea of having a homework help kind of thing where like retired teachers like myself could volunteer and students could call, I know, I know kindergarten can't, but we could have somebody coordinate volunteers who'd be willing to help kids with homework, either math or reading. Just listen to kids read and, you know, how would you do that with technology? That's another another hurdle, but I think it could be figured out. And so those are just some of the ideas I have.
Thanks. Sharon?
One of the methods that we use to keep in our hybrid is that we have a certain amount that is away from the campus. And the other is that we stagger classes. If we had, which would give them opportunity to be in person and what we do is is that two teachers who are taking the same subject matter, one would teach to have the class on one day. And the next teacher would teach their class on that same day at a different time. And then it would like, if it was on Tuesday, then on Thursday they come back for the other half. And then what they would do for the for the of campus is then they would have assignments that were due and they would present their assignments. So there's ways to bring that in. And then I like what Pat said. St. Paul is doing this, have retired principals and teachers who are helping out, volunteering to help students with some of the work that they're doing right now. But I like that, that there is already a nonprofit that in St. Paul that is providing those principles, they go through training, they go, they have background checks, they all of it, the whole thing. They've already been principals and teachers in some school district around the Minnesota area. So I think that would be a real plus for us if we're hybrid.
Great. Simi?
I mean, a hybrid concept sounds very intriguing to me, but it also seems very logistically challenging because you're moving back and forth between two two poles. One of the concerns I would have would be around how would we schedule people in the building? I just came across some article on, I forget where, but there was some article where somebody had written, you know, everybody goes in for four days and then stays at home for ten. And the idea behind that is that if they get sick, it will have incubated in that time and they can continue to stay home. I don't actually know the feasibility of of this would, of working or not. I know that other workplaces that I know of, they have two separate crews. One, you know, each crew goes in for two weeks at a time so that people can avoid. People can, will always have enough time to be off in case they they become infected with COVID. I think one of the challenges behind that is we would, we may want to look at having teacher teams where there's always some teachers who are in the building and some teachers who are teaching online and they may be in the building too, who knows? But the idea is that if you've got separate groups of kids learning, because it's a challenge, I think, to teach both in the classroom and to teach online, you would want to have different teachers with, who are able to focus. So you would have on week one, weeks one and two, I'm taught by Louise and she's in the classroom and she's going to teach me and her partner is Melinda. She's going to teach me online in weeks three and four so that I get the same content over that time, but we have fewer bodies in the building. I do, one of the things I really appreciate appreciate about this opportunity is the ability for some socialization. I think that especially, you know, kids are such social creatures and not having access to each other, I think, is really challenging for them. And so I would really, I I like this this pathway because it theoretically opens the opportunity for kids to have that in person connection that I think is so important for them. I just don't know how feasible the logistics behind a hybrid world would be.
Thanks. Linda?
Yeah, as a hybrid model sounds like it would be good for our students and our parents and our teachers, but yet, like Simi said, I think it would be confusing. I hope we don't have to go that route, but it's something that we might come down to. I like Sharon's idea of staggering. You know, if we possibly have kids go every other day so they're more spread out. And maybe those classroom days are the days that they get their lecture and assignments and whatnot. And then the days that they're working from distance learning, other days they're doing their assignments, their homework, their projects, that kind of thing. So they're still getting the same work from the teachers and they're just rotating on an every other day thing. I do think like Katie said, that it's very important to get our special ed students in there, you know, that those are our priority to getting back face to face, if if anyone. Another option would be kind of that choice option as far as if you have parents that have higher health risks or that are at home already with their kids, you know, they might be more interested in the online or the distance learning where parents that are essential workers aren't as worried about their kids being out face to face. Maybe they have the the face to face classes. I don't know how that would work, but that's something I just we could keep in mind.
Thanks. Katie?
The idea of hybrid seems somewhat of a transportation nightmare possibly. I think it's more on the lines of knowing which kids and you don't want to be with the buses and trying to figure that out. I think that might be a mess with hybrid if we do certain ways of the shifting them. I would like to see like maybe a split shift, like some kids go in the morning, some kids go afternoons at lunchtime, then we don't have to worry about lunch because some kids would go home before lunch, some kids would come right after lunch. Because then you'd still get somewhat of that social, but you could have half the number of kids in a class. I know that we'd have to figure that out with teachers, but possibly not even extending the day that the kids could get their learning and why they're there and then go home and work on their the activities or the assignments and that type of thing. Otherwise, a where the, again, where the kids that need to be in school or can be in school, maybe go to school and the teachers are having some sort of camera up in their classroom. So the kids that are at home are watching and are sitting there watching the whole lesson. This would be more for secondary and for those kids, they could watch that lesson and still get the same, but they would be sitting at home. So they would have those same opportunities because, but they'd be at home for whatever reason. Maybe if, you know, elementary isn't and they're a high school kid that has to watch a sibling, they could still participate in their classes, but from at home. I mean, that's, I don't know how it would work. Like I said, my thing was always coming back to transportation. How do we figure out where we're picking up on what days and do we divide it by transportation? Then we're going to end up with more kids in one grade than another grade. So that just seems like the biggest nightmare is transportation for that one.
All right. Louise?
I I love the idea of choice. I I don't know if it works in, logistically works, but I I always like the idea of choice. One idea I heard, it's not mine, but it hit me as interesting is an every other week schedule. So if we started looking at things for every other week, maybe grades kinder to four are face to face one week and next week they are distance learning. It again gives that week to set up and say, you know, here you go and you're off. If something happens, they're set up to continue distance learning if needs be. And then the opposite grades come in. At middle school level, maybe it's every other house. I think we have two of each grade level house. So again, it's that setup and next week, here's what it will look like. If for some reason the schools can't continue face to face, then then it's set up and it's not taking kids by surprise. I think another benefit of it is there are some things that just work better face to face. I think about science teachers and science labs, that lab time could be face to face and then there's something else that shifts out here. To get the number smaller, it's probably something like Katie mentioned, in order to get social distancing, it would probably still have to be a morning and afternoon shift and still one week on, one week off, just to get the number small. it would probably still have to be a morning and afternoon shift and still one week on, one week off, just to get the number smaller. I think another thing to think about is if we have some kind of blended learning, is to think about who, who will send their children. You know, Pat talked about she would want to see some kind of testing and such. If I'm a parent who wants to see testing in place before I send my child, I might opt for the distance learning side just because, just because of the type of parent I am. So, um, that's the end of my thoughts.
All right. Um, thank you. I know that was very quick. Let me tell you about the timeline because we'll have, uh, we'll be reporting, we'll have more time to look at this. Uh, once we see the themes and ideas and, and we look at that data, quantitative data and really pull out from all these focus groups. But, so through May 4th through the 15th, we are doing these stakeholder, uh, focus group meetings with as many groups as we can, um, we can focus, I've not focused on, that we can schedule. So as I said, we're doing all of our advisories for parents, we're doing students, we're doing teachers, we're doing administrators and gathering that feedback. Then we have steering committees that'll start to take a look at that, uh, or, or steering committees, I should say, for focus groups. We'll have the communication to internal stakeholders back, uh, the week of May 18th to May 29th, depending on how long that takes. And, and if there's more we need to, to do, but by the 29th. And then we'll communicate to our external stakeholders, uh, between June 1st and June 5th. Now, we don't anticipate that every decision will be made at that time. It'll be what our thoughts are and we'll start planning and then we can refine further. So I'm saying that because as I mentioned at the beginning, there are parents who are not on an advisory committee who felt like they wanted to, to give us input. There certainly will be opportunities as we go through, which we always have on our, our website with, we're listening. And we will be taking all ideas into consideration to design the best, uh, approach possible. Once we start in the fall, once we know what the limits are. So I want to thank you so much for, uh, for your time. I'm going to ask that, that all of you guys will be able to leave the meeting and I, and Julie and I need to stand as we archive it to make sure we get it recorded and, and finalized. And I want to make sure I don't see any chat comments. So it doesn't, doesn't look like we've missed any. Julie will be watching that too, in case there were any. But again, thanks so much for your input tonight and I look forward to, once we get through these, seeing the data. I think there's some creative ideas and, and some challenges as you pointed out. So have a good evening. Thank you.